I've dealt with Mark for a few times and I...
And I realize they're a little more expensive. But I think the...
Vexner.
What's that?
Vexner.
Well, that makes it easier to that.
Well, there come, there come that. They're, they're not...
I think they're about two ten an hour and we're getting about two or five an hour now from... So...
Two twenty, yeah, depending on the attorney's degree. So associates are one ninety, the shareholders are two twenty.
And...
So depending on they want about...
They would be available to, I don't think, be here physically at the meetings, but I think it, you know, a lot of meeting stuff comes up, particularly with, with what we have going on, that it would be nice to have counsel if we have questions and... And I think that there's certainly been precedent here too, I understand. And I, I still have a hard time, you know, you go to a city council meeting, the person sitting next to the mayor is...
The attorney.
The attorney.
Yeah. Um, I mean my, I'm not in disagreement with that, especially with how you're going, to have that legal advice. I think with that though, it would be hard if it's someone from a distance, whether it's calling in or not, it'd be hard to follow the conversation or, I don't know. I stay, you know, I mean, I do different meetings by, as you probably do too.
Yeah.
You know, and it's a little different though, not that it can't be done. It's just a little different.
Probably go get that to the discretion.
So you got two.
But I get it. And may, and maybe we, if there's a certain thing that we are discussing based on the agenda, then we plus up the attorney be present on the phone or available on the phone based on the agenda.
Yeah, fine.
That's it with that.
Great.
We good on that topic?
Yeah.
All right, I did want to, it's that time of year, leave it out, we're still running the school here. I will register for next year. Uh, I'm gonna tackle elementary first. So I give you two sheets, one over has elementary numbers on it and the other one has secondary. So, uh, I just wanna go through these and get your opinion. Well, where we should go with some of this stuff. I've got some options on here. So in kindergarten, you can see, for whatever reason right now, we have a very low projected number.
Wow.
We're hoping to improve upon that. Uh, we'll start, uh, start doing the advertising once, we'll do the Virginia thing here for a while.
And our projection is based on the known children in that age group within our district?
Well, we know all of the children in our district that are age four right now. And that number is actually not all that large either in comparison. I mean, normal year, our census numbers are anywhere from a hundred, a hundred and ten. This year it's seventy-six.
Okay.
And mind you, that those are numbers that were generated in ECFE years between the various towns locating these families. I mean, there isn't a scientific method for how we're locating them. Some of them aren't doing a living that are of those seventy-six and others that moved in that we don't know about science.
Yeah.
It's not exact science, but we think there's seventy-six. And we always send a, a personal invitation to come visit the school with all seventy-six of those families. We'll do that again real soon. But, that said, um, a large part of what we guess on is what's in the four-year-old class here now, which our four-year-old class was as low as it's ever been. So anyway, there's that. Um, so right now, we're sitting down with two sections there. We move up to first grade, there's seventy-six kids in there. We hit four sections there as kindergartners. I did show, if you wanted to go to three sections, it would be about twenty-five each. So with the recommendation, we do that. But at the first grade, I recommend a few to four sections. Second grade, pretty straightforward. It's gonna have to be three sections. Third grade, fifty-three, two sections is twenty-six, three sections seventeen, eighteen. Fourth grade, three sections, twenty. Fifth grade, two sections of twenty-nine, two sections of nineteen. The only reason that I would strongly advocate for your, three in that scenario is the classrooms over there are pretty small. It's tough to put twenty-nine kids in there.
Yeah.
And the same holds true for, for sixth grade and that stuff. So I, my recommendation would be to have the, right now, we're just gonna project two sections in kindergarten, keep four sections in first grade, and then three all the way down. No, I can't, unless somebody has objections to that.
Those are the class sizes at Iowa's school.
What's that?
Those are the class size.
I know. I, I had thirty in my elementary classes there.
I mean, I'm saying, they had, me going to Gilbert School back in the early seventies, we had three sections in just the Gilbert School.
Each was a lot smaller.
But your class size, you remember what your class size was, do you remember? You just said three sections.
No, no, we had three sections of each class. They were probably, I'm gonna say twenty, maybe, because they were like...
Those are small classrooms.
They were like, they were like five rows, they were like, you know, five rows of four, four rows of five. I think it was like four and then five across.
Yeah, those are very small classrooms when you go there for the initial, you know...
The Franklin Room, just to put it in perspective, the Franklin Room is about a hundred square feet, like six fifty over there.
Yeah.
That was a junior high, that was, no, that was a junior high.
The Franklin ones?
No, no, she was, that was a junior high though.
I can't remember.
The elementary...
Can we go back to twenty-one? University West School and that, you're right.
All right, any other questions on that? Moving over to high school. So what you're looking at here is, um, courses, we did a first round of registration a couple of weeks ago. And you're looking at, the first column is the number of kids that requested a particular course. We also asked them to pick an alternate in case they, that didn't fit into their schedule. So that's the second column is kids that picked that as an alternate. And the third column is the number of sections that we would suggest we run and corresponding one of semesters, and I'll explain that in a moment. So for instance, art seven, we have sixty-seven kids that need art seven. We're looking at splitting that into three sections. That is a semester course, so that would be three semesters, three sections. If that was a full-year course, it'd be six semesters. Make sense?
I.e. English seven.
What's that?
I.e. English seven.
Yeah, right. So seventh grade is going to be the one that we're, we're gonna look for some guidance on because, so anyway, art, we're looking at art seven, art eight, having one section of that. One of the things that we had talked about with Virginia, just throwing it out there. Right now, we require all of our seventh graders to take some form of music, either band choir, orchestra, or general music. That is not required, but I state that is a local requirement here. There is some sentiment that maybe we should not be offering that, that we should not be...
Requiring it.
Requiring it. And allowing those kids to take something else in art, computer program, something else. Typically, the kids that are in general music are kids that have no interest in music at all. And it's, it is a little bit of a problem at times. It's not the most fun class for them to teach. The fear is if we don't require them to take some kind of music, it might hit on the band choir program. Because any of the kids, when we tell them they have to take their music, they choose band or choir or orchestra. So, we're not gonna do anything but for next year, but just put my thoughts ahead.
To have that conversation.
You know, talking about painting, Andrew, you should be going through the... Let's, go ahead.
Well, what do you want me to go through, every...
Well, yeah, I mean, talk about the loan overs and should we, shouldn't we?
Well, you know, the, the painting has thirteen, but, um...
And ten alternate.
Yeah, and ten alternate. But we decided to go instead with cartoon and animation basics with...
You gonna need some water?
With fifteen, just because that's a little bit different than, than the painting. Um, and the digital photography as well. Um, you know, plus with the cartoon and animation basics, you get fifteen and eight. And that's the same as painting too, you got twenty-three and twenty-three, so. But we decided to do the animation and cartoon one, just because it's something different, yeah.
So, one thing with, with the art stuff or even anything, is there a description of any of this stuff? I was being a fill-in parent for a neighbor because their parent was gone and trying to help with this. I'm like, I don't know with this, like, and I was, I had Google stuff and then I tried to look online and we didn't, they didn't match.
It's under the high school, I mean, when you go to the website?
Yeah.
And the course catalog description should be there for all of these.
Maybe, I don't know, but it would be. Course catalog description, got it.
Yes, course catalog description.
I don't know where I was looking, but I couldn't find what I was looking for.
And we also share it with the students too. So like, if the student has their iPad, they have a, their registration, they should have on their iPad via email. I send it to them and the course description, catalog. So they have an email too.
So I could have been like, pull up your email from Mrs. Williams.
Yeah, and then they would have seen it. So, 'cause that course catalog description is hard to print out, it's just so many pages, so.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, and then, um, you know, for the business classes, we had, well, the computer seven, obviously that will go with Mr. Griffin Troggs building. But then the technology skills and intro to computers are just kind of low numbers, so we're not running anything at that time, um, for those courses. And then, English, um, we did make a switch from going, requiring an English eleven and an English at twelve. We used to have a lot of electives that kids could take and we wanted to make sure they have that core curriculum for eleventh grade and twelfth grade. So we made a switch to that, but then what happened is some of our, our English electives didn't go. We didn't have enough kids, 'cause they're all in English eleven or English twelve or college writing one or college writing two. Um, it doesn't say that we're offering a section of college writing one and two, but we will be, um, at least one of them. They're, uh, some semester courses, college writing one and college writing two. Speech is low, so we didn't offer speech. Then with our fax, um, classes, I was hoping the careers in education one would go, but we only had five people sign up for that one. But we'll offer independent learning, um, or independent living and personal finance along with a section of family consumer and science at the high school.
Yeah, junior high, we had high interest in seventh grade fax and eighth grade both. So you can kinda see we split that up into four and two.
One thing about the careers in education, a couple of things for you. I mean, one, if you're doing the math there, we're, uh, two semesters short of her being full-time, which is not great. We definitely want to keep that program. But the careers in education is something that's new and it's something that's going to be one of the career pathways and I would definitely encourage the board to consider if we can encourage a few more kids to get in there, even if we could get to ten to actually run that thing next year to see if we can get it off their own.
I mean, is there, is there like any, um, I would say, a job fair or something that would kinda like spark their interest in signing up? Or how do these people, how do these kids know about, like, they sign up for careers?
Other than reading it from the catalog and...
Yeah.
Well, they get information from the teachers, but again, that teacher might not see every student. Um, but it's some, some word of mouth and then the registration guide mostly.
Anyway, we're between that and here, I heard that food science is usually popular too, I'm not sure what happened here. Did you see there was...
There's quite a few kids this year.
The, this year, we have a lot, there's almost thirty in that class.
In which class is that?
In the food science.
That qualifies as a...
Chemistry.
Chemistry credit. And the six kids that signed up for it from, um, for next year, um, they're all juniors. So we could offer it, you know, when they're seniors and there'd probably be more juniors that would sign up for it that following year to be able to run it.
Either way, we're gonna be looking at that. Keep going.
Okay, industrial tech. Um, we're hoping we can find somebody for that position. Uh, we're, I will be on the interviewing committee with the Virginia principal and staff. They're going to be interviewing next week. I think three people for an industrial tech position, so I'm gonna sit on that and see if we can, um, find a good candidate for industrial tech.
So are they, are they looking for a tech teacher as well?
Mm-hmm.
So we'd hire two, plus three?
Two, probably.
Two.
Two. Um, but woodworking, I'd like to offer, um, for that and small engines. That basic maintenance and vehicle, that's wrong. That's gotta be, that's a typo. There's not fifty-one kids. There's not, there's not fifty-one. But must be maybe fifteen, yeah. That got messed up. Um...
Who teaches these classes?
We don't have anybody.
Well, George was here for first semester and he did small engines, autos, and woodworking for us first semester.
And what's industrial tech, what is that in Dale?
I believe it's...
Everything.
Everything.
Woods, nails, stuff.
Okay, moving on to math. Those are all very typical. We did try to offer a year-long college algebra for those kids that had algebra two, but just aren't quite ready for the pre-calc. Mrs. Peschall thought it might be a good idea to see if we could get enough kids in a, in a year-round col- college algebra instead of trying to do college algebra for a semester and trigonometry. Uh, but we only had eight kids, so we will not be offering that, the year-long college algebra. But the rest of them are all standard math classes that we've been running. And then music, so our numbers. And that's traditionally what we've had.
Except for eighth grade band, they're a little bit low this year. This year, there's sixteen seventh graders and only six of them signed up for eighth grade band.
Are they doing the band trip next year?
Yes.
Yes.
I know there's typically a drop after that, correct?
There was a drop after the last trip, but we never really covered it.
And talking about PE, I'm excited about two new course offerings that we'll be able to run because of the interest of, of students. The outdoor recreation course and then a body shaping one and two that is more geared for females only for body shaping. The FIAD teachers thought it would be a good idea to try to offer a high school FIAD course that was strictly for girls because a lot of them don't do like team sports or the personal, um, fitness and wellness because they're in the weight room with the boys. So they developed this course called Body Shaping and we've had, um, a good amount of interest in it, so I'm excited for those two new courses.
What is the difference in that versus personal fitness and wellness other than female only?
That? I, I don't, I honestly, I don't know, 'cause it's the first time we're offering it and...
We're not allowed to say it, anyway.
There must be some sort of political correctness to that.
So, so it doesn't say female only in the, in the book? Okay.
And did you wanna comment on any of your suggestions? Okay, and then for, um, science, hoping that we were gonna be able to get microbiology to go, um, college credit class, but I think some of those kids that are taking the college credit courses feel like they already have so many because they have the human bio and human bio one, one and two that they're taking. And so they just weren't enough interest for that microbiology for CEP. But those are traditional classes that we've been offering.
How does it work, like chemistry, CEP, it says twenty-four max and you got twenty-seven signed up?
Um, well, once we set the schedule, we know that everybody that wants chemistry or the chemistry CP won't get it, usually. Um, just because they'll have to pick and choose. So it, it actually will probably work out just fine. If they're, and they probably would take a couple more, even though it says a max of twenty-four. I know Mr. Stroster would probably take twenty-seven if need be, yeah. And then the history, um, we are offering a new course for, um, CEP for college credit, the, uh, US history, we're going to be doing that one. Let's see. Yeah, US history CEP. Um, so that's corresponding with our eleventh grade. But we've never had a, an eleventh grade history course for college credit. So we're going to be offering that next year and we had a lot of kids sign up for that. That's a new one for us. And our criminal justice and business law is doing well with numbers. Um, another course that has not been offered since I've been here, um, but they decided to offer it again is the Iron Range History. So we'll be able to run that with sixteen requesting it and twenty-one, um, as an alternate course. And then psychology, we'll be running again as well. Anything for something?
Numbers are pretty consistent. They don't have a lot of choice in synth in eighth grade for their core classes.
And then our Spanish one and Spanish two. Not enough to offer Spanish three. We don't, um, teach jibway here, but it is offered via telepresence for kids that would like to take that. We don't have to look at the special ed. And then the vocational classes are down below for FUDOC and the nursing, which is quite popular every year, first responder. And welding had a tremendous, um, response for, for welding. Twenty-two kids, that's quite high. I don't think we've ever had twenty-two kids sign up for it.
That's good.
Any questions on any?
I mean, is there any other, I mean, when you look at these welding classes and, you know, I see the basic, you know, is there anything like machining or CNC or anything like that that a guy could, uh...
Or gal.
Or gal? Yeah, could take?
We don't right now.
I would, I would really like to see something like that brought into this, I think, uh...
That's right, one of the things we're looking ahead to.
I know, I mean, but...
Yeah, I don't know.
I just find it hard to believe, like, your automotive mechanics and the welding, I mean, those, those should, you know, those kinda all go together, you know? The look on a car, something, you gotta be able to learn how to weld and vice versa, you know?
It's, it's hard to brainstorm, I feel like, on the potential when we don't have a full-time instructor. You know what I mean? That could come in and see like...
And a lot of it...
You know, and talking with the kids and the interest of the kids and, I mean, I think...
And not having it on campus here for our night, you know, for kids to go to Gilbert, it's difficult.
So, yeah, like Jeff said, you know, the, the classes that are offered are all the, you know, depends on the skillset of the person, instructor. So I just hope that you guys find that, that, that person, gal or guy, that he's well vndercent. You know, and he's a, a miller, so he'd know a lot of that stuff.
The only controversial number that you'll find anywhere on this page is seventh grade.
I was lucky.
The ones that are on them are eighty-nine, and so it's pretty much thirty in a class. If you went down, if we went to four sections, go down to one twenty-two.
And with the thirty, you'll get some thirty-twos and threes and twenties.
Yeah, that's assuming you can schedule every order.
I'd say, where's the breaking point? What, where is it that you guys would be coming to us and saying we need four sections versus three?
We had the same, same situation last year. I think we had eighty-nine or ninety kids and, or ninety-one. I can't remember what the preliminary number was, but you guys decide to push some of those to four. This is when you push one to four, say you push math to four or English to four, then it kinda almost makes you do social studies and science, but it could be scheduled. Um, with, where we have some, some fours and some threes, it's just more difficult and the balance is just not there then.
Okay.
So, um, scheduling wise, I'd be a lot happier if it was four, but, um, that number could go to eighty-five tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, that one's a hard one.
Could go to ninety-two.
I know we have the two, the two grades right now that are... We always end up having that conversation piece. Because in, in, you know, and we know that it matters of the students that you have in there and it matters of the teachers and I mean, there's so many other factors on... But I, I get concerned, I guess, looking at math, having thirty kids in math.
Yeah.
You know, and, I mean, just some of those core classes, I get a little worried about.
I'd agree with having thirty kids in a math class would be tougher than having thirty kids in a lecture, social studies course, I think.
For FIAD. Yeah. We'll, we'll look at that.
Okay.
We have our eye on it, I mean, it's, it's on the radar.
Okay.
I mean, this plan, it kinda plays a silly questioner, I mean, but with the, the pending consolidation, I mean, we're still have, I mean, is it basically, assuming we consolidate, that we kind of move forward with our plan? And I understand there's still separate high schools. But our plan in high school and in elementary for next year and then the following year, everything is a lot more coordinated?
I think we might have two years of not very coordinated.
I'm still managing the school separate. I'm still managing, then that's kinda what I'm thinking is likely of the schools managing separate to be able to, I mean, because each school has, there are various obstacles just in the physical environment, in the, you know, and during the next couple of years, I mean, I think of like all that they've talked about for even pulling the systems together into one.
Yeah, I think we'll start, you know, we'll start, we're already starting to talk about aligning like the, the credit requirements, like graduate credit requirements, our curriculum, what we're gonna be offering, you know, get our handbooks on the same page. Um, so there's a lot of things that we can do in the two years and still stay separate, but we can start.
Yeah, I mean, we would still probably be looking at this as we...
There might be more opportunities to share a teacher, a lot easier under, under consolidation. I mean, this year, we had one teacher that we share to.
Sure, Mr. Rice.
Yeah, but, you know, those types of things, yes, we're gonna look forward to, but we don't know for sure. And like you said, until we open the new building, probably, um, there'll be, well, we'll be running two high schools.
The one school this year, we'll be running two high schools, yeah. So seventh grader is just the biggest one that you guys will be watching on?
Yeah. Any other questions on that? All right, moving on.
Why don't we start now?
That's a good question.
Well, it's superintendent contract stuff. I just wanted to make sure that we are talking with our board as a whole about the discussions we're having with the ad hoc committee. And, um, I think you guys were emailed and I think we also were given it at the table here today, right?
No, it was Jeff's contract.
Superintendent's contract.
We didn't get a copy of the proposed contract.
It wasn't emailed?
It was emailed.
Oh, it was emailed, but I, yeah.
But not here at the table.
Yeah, and I, yeah.
Need to make copies quick, it would probably be a problem. Thank you, Debbie.
Yep.
So maybe we should just, we, we could add?
If you want, or otherwise you can just keep going to these numbers.
Well, essentially, it's Trevor Helmers, right? Is that his last name?
Is that his last name? He merged together the two superintendent contracts, the Gilbert one and the Virginia one, the best he could to come up with the contract that you were emailed the last ad hoc meeting. And then he's updated or we've updated the second one that you just got, I want to say Thursday. And essentially, the two biggest thing, or the three biggest things was the pay. There's a thirty thousand dollar increase. We're looking at Noel for that position. And it's a request of thirty thousand dollar increase on what he's currently making.
Is it thirty thousand even?
So it went from one sixty-eight something to the one ninety-eight, two eighty-one.
Under, excuse me, the one sixty-eight is existing con... Or what his existing contract would be for next, for the 2021 school year. Currently, he's at one sixty-three.
I think Debbie handled that.
Yep, yep.
I think Debbie handled this. I forgot one. She's got one.
Who's that one? So on his contract, it said he said one sixty-three to what?
It was one sixty-eight, went up to...
One ninety-eight.
One ninety-eight.
Two eighty-one.
Two eighty-one.
That's a thirty thousand dollar jump.
Yep, for that first year with a two-point-nine ten thousand, I think. No, that's not the one I'm looking for. It has like five pieces of paper in it. No, it all, it's all numbers. All numbers.
The first year is two-point-nine.
Basically, his contract for next year, the salary is one sixty-eight, oh sixteen. The proposal is one ninety-eight, two eighty-one. So it's thirty thousand dollar difference.
Did you just pack it with this information? There's this one and then there's the three different superintendents?
Yeah, they're in there.
So... The one... Thirty thousand dollar jump, basically, right? And then it is a two-point-nine increase year two and a two-point-eight increase year three. So if you're looking at this part, at this one? At the bottom there, that's what the, that's what the proposed salary would be.
So starting the proposed salary?
Yep, the one ninety-eight, two eighty-one. The top is what, what he's currently making. The one-ten, Jeff, did you get this one too?
No.
The one-ten is, I believe that's what they were proposing for the buildings and grounds construction liaison, correct?
So that's what I'm wondering, okay. So this is... This is if Noel is within the superintendent and Jeff takes the building and grounds and position?
This one is, and then the bottom is the consolidated district or if we had one superintendent, even if we're not consolidated. So the one ninety-eight is what we're looking at for the superintendent's contract?
For two districts, so one superintendent to manage two districts.
Or one superintendent.
So either one.
Consolidated, yes, one superintendent.
Yep.
It's basically the intent would be to... You know, this really needs to be decided before consolidation vote. We can't wait and then, what, May twelfth or May thirteenth, say, oh geez, we need a superintendent for next year.
Cause Jeff's contract ends June thirtieth.
So there's two ways you can do that. One is to keep having, should that happen, independent, keep having the two superintendents. Or the other one is, is, you know, which is what I think we think is a better idea to have, to resolve that and to have one superintendent regardless of whether we're consolidated or not. So there still is the need also for a construction liaison, whether we're consolidated or not, because the buildings are going to be built. And kind of the twist, in my mind, that comes in is the whole building and grounds situation in Virginia. Where what they're proposing is that the position, Jeff, the consolidate or the construction liaison being combined with, they currently have a building and grounds opening, which I understand is being filled by Mike Resbach, the Parkview principal, kind of in his spare time. I mean, for lack of a better word. So they're proposing to have a kind of this split. And I don't know what that split is, if it's fifty-fifty or... But if we do that, then if we're consolidated, there's no issues. If we aren't consolidated, it really becomes a split position where some of it's funded by the Virginia district and some of it comes out as a construction budget. Which I understand there's money in the construction budget for a construction liaison. But I haven't seen that budget. I don't think any of those have.
So is the ad hoc committee saying that... Is that the recommendation coming forward from the ad hoc group that's been reviewing this is to go over to one superintendent position and hire a construction liaison?
So far, is what is being... Shared superintendent regardless?
Regardless.
And still bringing in a construction liaison.
So the construction liaison would be responsible for both, Devlin, Gilbert and Virginia?
The construction, the construction.
Construction, but what about the, well, construction liaison and buildings and grounds, right? Or is this, or is this just a...
There would be, and I think it's that...
Cause I hear those two names, those two positions I put together.
Really, really, the main purpose here today is just to kind of go over the superintendent's contract because we're, we're still, we're still trying to figure out the buildings and grounds and maintenance position and the construction liaison position. We haven't hammered that out yet, but we are getting, you know, we're getting closer on the superintendent contract piece. And like I said, the, the main differences, and correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but the main difference is, is the thirty thousand dollar bump. The thirty thousand dollar bump, there's a ninety-day opt-out option in the contract, which basically says that if for some reason, you know, things aren't working out, say the boards aren't working well with the superintendent or whatever, the superintendent has a ninety-day opt-out option. So he'd be able to give a ninety-day notice to say...
To end his contract.
To end his contract.
Where is that on here?
On termination during the term, page two, C. Five C, page two. The second paragraph. So I'm, I'm, I do like the idea of one superintendent. I mean, we've talked about and, and, you know, Mr. Carey has spoken about the administratively being heavy for the size of our school district. So that would make sense to me. I do feel strongly though if we have one superintendent managing, whether it's one newly formed consolidated school district across three different towns or two separate school districts across three towns, they cannot, they cannot have the focus on the construction of our new buildings. And I feel strongly that we need a construction liaison for that. Like that is just not realistic. And my concern is that the attention then gets pulled over to the new buildings versus the current operations of our schools.
And that's why that, that's why that's on the table.
So I feel like we can't have, we can't have one superintendent without that construction liaison, I feel strongly right now.
And that's why that construction liaison is on the table. We just haven't worked everything out with that yet.
And I, I've talked to John Hunick. And to kind of get a feel, I mean, this is a, this whole construction management way to get this done as opposed to the old design bid build way. You know, in design bid build, you have a contractor who's working to complete the contract where construction manager, they're, they're working for us. So I, you know, John tells me that that there is no set way that you need a construction liaison. It's, well, who do you typically, you know, what do you see in other places? Is it someone, a former contractor or... And he said, no, it's typically basically an employee of the district that is on special assignment. Whether it's, says it, yeah, it could be a principal. Says in some places, smaller districts, superintendents will take that on, on their own. He says sometimes it's teacher, sometime, I mean, it comes typically from within. It's not that... He sees very often that we would go out and hire someone as a construction expert to be our liaison. That's really what Kraus is doing for us. And I have asked Kraus, I, I, I think it would be good for myself, my benefit, but for everyone's benefit, to kind of give us a kind of, you know, construction management one-on-one at the joint powers meeting or... And just so everyone understands clearly what their role is. And they really, we have hired them to work for us.
I would actually think that even off of that, to have a flow chart highlighting those roles and that kind of complexity that we can be sharing with the community would be very valuable. Because I think that people will look at things and be like, well, why is this or why is that? Or we're already made for this one, what's that mean?
Right, right.
And they compare a construction project to that of building a house of this magnitude, and it's like, yeah, no, no, it's a little different.
Right.
So, okay.
As opposed to, I mean, the general contractor, you hire, they don't work for you. They're hired to build something for you. Where with Kraus, we hire them to work for us to manage the project.
I got a question about this, because we went from superintendent to construction liaison. We're gonna go back to this. Is there anything in here that your group has talked about as in protecting the Devlin, Gilbert district employees as when we talk about hiring, you know, like that? Are we gonna do one-for-one?
I'll speak to that because I, I had a discussion too with Jeff about, about that, advocating for our employees as well to make sure that happens. And I, I think that puts, you know, that, there's a lot of responsibility on us as the board to make sure that happens as well. But I think where we as a board may have made an error is when we had a discussion and we, you know, I think we have plenty of time to correct that. Maybe we have plenty of time, but we, we can correct that. But I think where we went wrong is in making, we had a meeting, we had a discussion, I think it was a collaborative meeting, and it was talked about how we were going to give the superintendents leeway and have conversations with, you know, employees about what positions they were interested in and what positions the superintendents felt that they would be best in.
That fit, yeah.
And we give them that power per se to make those decisions. And I think, I think we as a board need to make sure that we still have final say on that, you know, and approve that. Because I, I have heard a lot of things, a lot of rumors going around and a lot of who's going where. And I, I remember a statement specifically by Noel that said, we can't be, you know, we can't be looking at, you know, Virginia's got six employees and, and Devlin Gilbert's got four employees and, you know, we can't be petty like that, he said. And I think we need to be.
Yeah, we do.
We need to be. We need to make sure that we're doing right by our employees as well and...
And they aren't making the decisions, they're making recommendations to the board.
We need to be approving those.
And if it's six and four, it's pretty close. If it's ten and zero, then...
Right, right.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, I'm just saying when it comes to the hiring or reassigning positions, it needs to be, you know, it can't all be one-sided. You know what I'm saying? It has to be a one and one. I mean, I don't care how big Virginia's district is, if they're twice as big as us, okay, I don't, that's not a number that we're going to use for hiring. It's all, it's a one and one.
I think it's, I think it's easy, so it's... It's easy to say, and I'm not saying that Noel did this intentionally. It's easy to be a, the reality is Virginia's school district is larger than Devlin Gilbert. And it's easy to say, oh, let's be equal, let's, you know, not be petty and kind of look at, you know, all those little differences or little pieces of it. It's easier to say that when you're in a position of power. And being the larger school district, that's a position of power, no matter what. It just is the reality. It puts it into a position of power. They are the larger one. And it's easy when anyone in a, in power says, oh, it's, it will be fine, we'll work it out. It's easy to say that when you're not, when you're in a position to dictate those controls or the perception is there to it, to have that happen. So I think, I would hope that Noel hears this and that Virginia school board hears this, that it's not about, you know, always having one-for-one or things like that, but it's about the fact that we are a smaller district. Our community is putting a lot of faith and trust in this process and we have to do right by them, no matter what still. And we still have, we are advocates for our school district still, even as we come together. And we're advocates for our current employees and our students. So, and, and it has nothing to do with, with having, I'm not assuming any negative intentions, honestly, from Virginia. I think it's just, it's easy when any entity, any group of people is in a position where they are larger. I mean, the reality is, we see this with the county, we see this with St. Louis County, when Duluth will make decisions or whatever and be like, oh, we'll pay attention to the north.
We just need to have checks and balances.
I mean, we have, we have to speak for the north. We have to advocate for our north still. It, we can't just not let it happen and trust. And, and that's not anything about Duluth, of them intentionally doing that. It just happens. So I just, I, I agree. I think we do have to be very intentional and very watchful and speak to that. And I hope Virginia is just very receptive to where it's coming from, that it's not coming from a negative place. It's coming from just having to really be strong advocates for our district right now.
But it's, that being said, I mean, the protocol has to be fair and balanced. What do you mean by fair and balanced? Okay, in other words, you've got an employee in our district that's been with us for twenty years. You got that same employee, over their same job description, that's been there for two years. Okay, where does the fair and balance, where does that balance come in? Where is, what's fair? Does the person with 20 years of experience get the job versus two years' experience? Okay?
I think like the union things, that, that'll get worked out seniority wise. Right? But they're looking at administration and, you know, those, yeah, so.
I mean, even at that level, it's gotta be fair and balanced. You know, I mean, you know what I'm saying? I mean, like I said, I mean, I'm, you know, and the, the Virginia district, I mean, they've, and, and I'm, don't kill me, but it's just like they already got it set up where all their superintendents, I mean, the principals are already set in place of who's going where.
Is that true? Is that, is that true? I mean, do they have people already sent to positions? Because I don't, I have not, I, I, I haven't seen anything that, that confirms that. And I don't wanna jump the gun, well, you know, I don't know if that's the right phrase. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna be.
Reiterate rumors?
Yes, yeah. I, I would say that any of those kinds of things has to come before the boards. If we end up consolidating, we as of July 1st are a board of 13. That board will be making those decisions of, I mean, ultimately making those decisions. So I haven't heard any of that. I have, I mean.
How are you gonna know when you're looking at that?
Yeah.
Huh?
How are you gonna know what you're looking at?
What do you mean?
Trying to be strategic.
I know, I, I'll give you time to think about it.
I have heard some of those rumors and some of them have come from pretty credible sources.
I mean, for, but, you know, I mean, and you could just say, I mean, not to, not to, you know, talk about my press box, but, you know, why would he step out of a principal position when he's gonna retire this year? I do believe he's retiring this year. Why would he step out of that if that means then someone's gonna step in? Okay, now who's, who's gonna get that principal position apart from you?
Did he step out of that?
Well, I think he retires this year.
Well, you know what, though? I think we're digressing from the main topic. We need to, we need to talk about the superintendent contract in specific and.
But that goes back to this brandy that, that the part of this of the superintendent be responsible for the hiring and blah, blah, blah. You know, I think, I think part of this that it needs to be a fair and balanced of what his, you know, and we were talking two districts here, you know? You know, the, uh, you know, he's the chief executive officer of the consolidated district. And so directing assigned teachers and other, you know, and other consolidated district employees, you know, and like that. I mean, there's kind of, there's gotta be something in there that I would hope that would kinda, just kinda spell that out, that, you know, he's gotta re-director both, both districts or, you know what I'm saying, that you, you know.
Interesting.
Yeah.
So I think, I think honestly, having a very open and honest conversation in our next collaborative meeting is due for that. Because if, the reality, if, if we are hearing rumors, if we're hearing some of that stuff, this position will have a lot of responsibility within that, then let's put it out there and make it clear and have a direct conversation on, you know, because if we're hearing it, it's, I don't know, you know, um.
I mean, if we're consolidated, how do you, okay, I won't go there, just.
Let's just, let's get back to the superintendent contract here. Because like I said, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, but the three biggest things is that $30,000 bump, okay? So, um, that, that 90-day opt-out, um, Noel wouldn't be asking for any health insurance. Uh, he, he waves health insurance, um.
And with the $30,000 bump, or is that why it was, is that why it was?
He doesn't have enough.
He doesn't have health insurance.
I know, but, but is he asking for $30,000 because he's not taking the insurance?
No, he's asking, he would be asking for $30,000 because he's taking on another district, larger piece of the work.
Or, yeah, or a larger district.
Okay, all right. So then that puts us at what number, what number would we be at to combine two districts?
Well, like, like the one she says here. And in the contract is, it reflects it. If you look at X, uh, well, salary on page six, year one would be 198,000, 281. Year two would be that, um, 2.9% increase, which brings it to, to 204, um, 204,031 dollars. And then the year three would be a 2.8 increase for the, uh, 209,000, 744.
Plus there's a $10,000 retention bonus at the end of each year.
So that puts it up another $10,000.
Right.
Right. And that's, that's what's currently in this contract as well, um, but.
Who came up with the $30,000 jump?
That was his request, that was to take on another district. Um, but.
I mean, so have you guys negotiated that and said that's a little extreme?
We haven't. And what, the next, I think the next thing, you guys got an email saying that, um, there'd be a potential motion tonight for, um, and potential action. And I, I think that we could have additional discussion if you want to during the meeting tonight. But, um, I think the next step for us would be, in mine and Matt's opinion, again, correct me if I'm wrong, is to have a conversation about that, um, the $30,000 and the retention and talk about the front-end loaning versus back-end loaning. Because, you know, we'd like to ensure that he sticks around as well for the three years of the contract.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, while in, in particular, I mean, to just run it by everyone is, I mean, do you think we're on the, kind of the right path to then try and work out those details? Or are we completely off base if, you know, if consolidation fails? We don't wanna have a joint superintendent. If that's how we feel, now's the time to let us know. Personally, I would advocate for having one superintendent.
And I would as well.
Regardless of the vote.
Right, I would too, but, yeah, when it comes to the dollar mark, I mean.
So that's why.
For a guy to put a quarter in a slot machine and win the jackpot without any, you know what I'm saying? I mean, if you, if you agree to this like right out of the chute, well, he wins. Not that I'm saying that.
Well, we didn't, we didn't agree to anything, but we are in discussions about that. And, and I do think that thirty, when I look at the big picture and taking on another district, $30,000 seems reasonable to me. But I understand what Matt is saying about the front-end loaning too. I, I do think that, you know, it has to work to be our district's advantage as well.
Exactly, exactly. Or, 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 or even, I mean, what, what, what I'm thinking, I mean, but, but, but let's face it, we're, we're, right now, this, if we're out looking for a leader of the consolidated or two districts, it's a tough job. It'd be tough for us to, for someone who knew to walk into this thing. Um, that, yeah, that, that, that being said, this is gonna get tough once you get into the construction and there's gonna be budget issues. And it's not, construction projects aren't, I mean, they, they aren't always, there, there's gonna be issues that come up.
And you still gotta run a school.
And they're running a school at the same time. And then no matter how good we have with, with Kraus and then our construction liaison, first years are gonna be tough. And, you know, and I guess I would hate to see someone to next, I mean, say we move forward with, with Noel and, and, and next April, one, we get a notice, I'm gone in 30 days, see you later. Well, you can do that now.
What's our, what's our total student comp gonna be between both districts?
That's what I have.
25, like, 26.
Okay, let's do that, right around there, okay. So, and that's, that's, so my, I mean, my concern on this stuff. Um, okay, so 30,000 does not necessarily look bad, thinking, oh, you're taking on this other block of the work. However, um, that being said, and, and there's no way for me to say this without, so like I'm criticizing, I'm not, but you have to trust me because it's not gonna sound that way. Um, I think, I think Virginia's paying a lot already. So, so I think it's starting off already at a higher rate. Granted, he has a doctorate, there's other things, factors. He's not taking health insurance, therefore you negotiate your wage a little higher. I get that kind of stuff. But I think the reality for the size of the school for Virginia, they're paying a lot for their superintendent right now. Because when you do look at the comparables for other superintendents, he's probably right now making what we would normally be paying for that size of a school. The, the difference is, we know that it, there's gonna be a lot of work and a lot of headaches over these next few years, given the consolidation of two schools, the building of the new schools and the magnitude of managing and working through this huge referendum that we ended up passing. So with that being said, I almost look like, because I hate to set a precedence, like this is how much the superintendent of our school district gets. Let's say it's a consolidated one. This is how much money or, so four years later, five years later, six years later, that superintendent is still gonna be taking in that much money because the precedence was set during these three years. So I would actually, I would actually look at keeping the rate of pay fairly close, maybe with an average percentage increase over every three years. And actually would look at doing some type of intermediate, um, stipend kind of thing during these three, four, or even four, well, three years, these are contracts, three years, and doing a stipend during this transition time, recognizing there is gonna be a lot more need for you, a lot more time. It's gonna be intensive as it gets smoothed out. Because my concern is, as it's smoothed out, a school district that size to be paying over $200,000 for a superintendent is ridiculous.
Well, and it, so.
I mean, and, and, and if you were to add the health and welfare onto that, what would the additional cost be?
Well, here's the thing, here's, here, if you look at this one.
But if you, but if you, nor if you would.
Look at this one, okay? And you look at the, our two separate school districts right now and the, the salary and, you know, the total cost at the bottom. You know, one, one reflects insurance, one does, you know, doesn't have insurance. And it's, it's ballpark between these two superintendent positions.
So $20,000, that's a family plan, right?
Yeah.
To you, Jeff? So what's, what's a single plan? Cause he has no kids, he's not married.
It's about 9400 or something.
Okay, so take 10,000 off of that.
Right, but I, 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 yeah, I, I, I just, I personally, I, I look at total compensation. And, and this, this chart here is not exactly accurate. Say you start with Virginia and it's 163, 281, yeah, that's the salary. But there's a 10% protection bonus at the end of every year.
So it's 173.
But soon he makes the error.
Well, and then I didn't, okay, so, um, I also, I don't have this to share with everybody, but I did make a note at the top of this sheet that says you can look online too and go to, um, MBE did some sort of a average salary for 2018, 2019 school year. And so I, I just pulled some of that information off and, you know, just making a.
I mean, so this is a contract that Virginia had signed up, signed, and they gave him a $10,000 retention bonus. Why was it even added back in here if that was something the Virginia board negotiated with him?
Well, Virginia board pays him this year, this.
I know, but I understand.
Because obviously there, he's wanting to keep it in there.
Oh, yeah.
Well, cause it's his contract, you know, but, but just, you know, looking at, talking about. Looking at, um, this that I pulled off the internet and looking at 2018, 2019. And, um, Deer River is on here. And the Deer River superintendent is obviously, um, he is the Nashua-Tewatton superintendent as well. So it's a shared superintendent position at the moment, yep. But, um, just for salary, sorry, there's a whole long list here. But just for salary, that position during the 2018, 2019 year was 179,000, 109. Just, just for salary.
Or he's driving from Nashua, Tewatton all the way to Deer River, that's not like three miles away.
I think they have a, that's a different arrangement there though where you have two districts that are not even all that associated, they're not associated with each other. He's doing two jobs. He has a contract with Nashua-Tewatton and he has a contract with Deer River. This is how you look at that.
But.
It's gonna be close.
It's not, uh, it's not apples and apples.
That was, you know, 179, 109, um. So there, there were some that were higher. Did Hibbing get a new superintendent last year? Okay, cause that, the superintendent prior then, cause it would be 2018, 2019 list that I got here. But that superintendent of Hibbing was making 100 and, I wanna say 50,000.
It's 125 when Herman Tom did a search.
Yeah, uh, that, it's cause, you know, a new superintendent.
So this is the newer one?
Yeah.
The 125 is the newer one?
Yep. Alexandria is 168.
Is that just?
For a school district. For the superintendent, just base.
For 4,200 students.
Yep, it's, uh-huh. Sorry. Just trying to find the one that I'm getting to. Of course, I can't find it.
Yeah, it's tough because, I mean, when you look, I mean, I, I don't think that you're comparing apples to apples at all in looking at Jeff's current contract and Noel's current contract either. Because you have the principal assignment that Jeff has right now, which I don't think should be included on here, I believe. That's in addition to it, wouldn't be something that the new principal would continue to manage or do anything with. Um, because we would have to figure something on that.
I'm gonna be relieved of that duty next year?
Well, that would have to, I mean, it wouldn't go in the new superintendent contract at all.
Hibbing, there's Hibbing.
I mean, there's no way.
Hibbing's base for 2018, 2019 was 148, 569.
That'd be a real similar size.
Plus health insurance, I'm assuming. Plus health insurance would be on top of that.
And everything.
Duluth Public School District is 179, 731 base. That doesn't include benefits.
And two, and two schools.
But that, I just printed them off because we had questions to move about.
Duluth is gonna be searching for a superintendent.
They are.
They are searching for a superintendent.
Who is?
They are, they are.
Right.
As, yep.
Let's actually get on my resume. Yeah, that's my kid.
So.
I'm just, I'm just, if, you know.
And as a superintendent, I'm sure that if things are up in the air and, you know, the situation is prob, could be the same for Jeff too. It, it's prime interviewing season and it's, I'm sure that he is applying. Noel was applying for other positions as well.
Well, and 30,000, so 30,000 a year, right now, dealing with everything. But you're, you are taking on a bigger district and there's gonna be a lot of work in these next few years. I guess either you call it out as a stipend or we make it extremely clear that come three years when a new contract's being negotiated, I, I, I just, I, that precedence is a little scary to me.
All I kinda see this is, I mean, to, to me, yeah, there's, you know, I, I don't think the 163 plus 10, um, is, is, is on a line, particularly when we compare that to where, where we're at here. And I do think taking on, you know, the additional duties. And I do think taking on, you know, the additional duties for the other district, not even considering additional help with the construction and some of the headaches that are gonna come along with that. I, I think that certainly warrants a bump from his existing contract. Salary wise, no other than certain thousands or not, I, you know, especially, you know, at least that should be spread out, but I, I think it's a combination of that along with, you know, maybe that retention bonus is ten thousand at the end of the first year, maybe it's fifteen to twenty-five at the end of the second year, and maybe it's, you know, something like that at the end of the third year, and that way you've included that in part of the compensation, and then the base salary hasn't exploded.
I like that idea.
Right.
I just feel like.
But at the same time, you're getting close, if not even hitting the number, for what he's asking for in compensation over the three years.
Yeah, I just feel like in three, four years, it could look different, it's gonna, hopefully not, but it's gonna be different and better and smoother, you know, but over the next few years, yeah, it's gonna, I mean, and I get it, and yeah, thirty thousand doesn't seem extraordinary to me, given you are increasing the workload and the, you know, the supervision and, um, the students and everything, you know, but, but yeah, I think just, that's my concern is looking at that rate in four years, in five years, when you don't have those, those pieces there anymore.
But, you know, and I guess we, we don't know if he's gonna stick around for years back there either, because I'm sure he also realizes that's pretty top heavy, you know, I mean, that's a lot of, that's a lot of money. But, um, I, I do agree with Matt that, you know, if we do the thirty thousand initial bump and then, um, you know, that retention bonus or whatever, if we, if we did do that, I agree with him, don't put all the money in the front, the front year or two, have it more on the back to be more enticing to stay for three years.
The, the, I met with.
You know, but the retention, he wouldn't get the retention bonus if he doesn't stick around, so, you know, that, he wouldn't, you know, if he were to opt out ninety days or whatever, and he wouldn't get that retention bonus.
I met with Noel, he called me up and I, we went and had coffee and this thirty thousand dollars floors me, because the conversation that I had with him is nothing what this was. Okay, he, he said he was looking for ten thousand a year for the next three years, which would be sixty thousand over the course of three years. So for simple math, it'd be one hundred thousand each start, first year you get one hundred and ten, then one hundred and twenty, and one hundred and thirty, one hundred and thirty in year three. I asked him what this, I called him up and I asked him what it was about, and he says, Bill, that's not what we talked about, and I, I'm just disappointed that he said that because I, it's exactly what we talked about, he wanted ten thousand dollars per year.
For a consolidated district or for?
Yes, yes, why would we be talking to him otherwise?
Or for?
No, it's as, as a consolidated district.
Cause we're also talking about.
Cause why would I negotiate?
Having one, one superintendent as well, regardless of if he's.
Oh, right, well, how you wanna look at it? I mean, for consolidated, not consolidated, we wanna go back to one, we wanna go with one superintendent, so to put thirty thousand dollars right up front, that's a twenty-plus percent increase on the front end.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
So.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, that's the discussion I had with Noel.
So what's your, what's, we've, we've only got like twelve minutes, so what's your thought? Because our thought is to, to sit down with, um, the Ad Baq Committee and Noel and have a discussion on the salary and the front end loading and the retention and trying to figure that out differently, and having a discussion on vacation and sick time and what is trans, you know, what, what is transferred over and if anything, you know?
Ten thousand, the, the thirty thousand dollar bump plus the ten thousand dollar retention bonus just to stick around, I mean, I would, I mean, I mean, who's to say that he just wouldn't jump ship and leave? Cause it's too much for him, you know what I'm saying? Even though it's taken on two districts, I mean, it's too much for him. You know, I mean, maybe give him money, stick around, instead of give it all up front.
Yeah, that's.
Well, that's what, that's what, yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You know, it's, don't give him the thirty thousand dollars that first year, make it more towards the third year, you know, give, give some the first year and the second year, but have more of it on, on the third year.
Yep.
To be enticing to stick around for like three years. But are you guys okay with us sitting down and having, having that?
Yep.
Discussion around the, the money and refiguring?
Yeah, I mean, I think you guys clearly, I mean, I, I agree with what you both have said and, I mean, just different ways that it can be approached, you guys heard my concerns of what's, I mean, I get that there needs to be more, I'm not opposed to that in any such way, I just wanna be very cognizant of down the road, what that might look like and the expectation.
I guess just speaking from, we are definitely in negotiations for this, for this position, you know, but I also don't wanna have it perceived that we're not interested in having him.
No, he's a, he's, he's the guy that I think that got us this far.
In addition to Jeff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In addition to Jeff.
Yes, Jeff, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
In addition to Jeff.
Hope you check my poll.
You can hug it out later, okay, but.
I'm not talking.
It'll be a quiet board meeting.
I mean, it's these, I mean, it's these two gentlemen that got us to where we are.
Absolutely.
Well, and that was my term of belief, that.
I'm sorry, Jeff, I'll, I'll get it.
But I do, I, I strongly feel that we can't have one superintendent overseeing both districts or a consolidated district without a field, fielding liaison right now.
Yeah, I, I agree.
I mean, you just cannot.
Yep, I agree.
So, we, okay.
So we'll keep moving.
I mean, I just, I don't want that forgotten, because I feel that that has to be in place just as quickly as the superintendent, that if we do that.
I agree with that.
So we, we are, we are in agreement that we do want it for our superintendent, but we need to work out the financials a little bit better.
Yeah, I'm all over that.
Okay.
And what about the construction liaison?
All right, and we're gonna continue to work on that as well and figure out what, what the best option is for that position and so.
All right, we'll take a short break and then we'll continue here in two spots.
Okay.
You got a phone?